Commissioner Gamache.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Commissioner Jepson.
Here.
Commissioner Meisner.
Here.
Good morning. Item number four is to consider accepting the regular claims paid over $500 on the purchase card claims paid, the period ending September 5th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Moved by Commissioner Jepson, and seconded by Commissioner Brastad. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Item number five is the approval of minutes from the September 9th, 2025 county board meeting. Do I have a motion? Moved by Commissioner Schulte. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Heinrich. Any changes, questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just a quick comment, actually, that I read these minutes every, every meeting, and I'm really impressed with the quality and competency of our staff. It's easy to gloss over them and not really pay attention, but I do pay attention and check with them, and they're just really on point every time. And it's unbelievable. It really is. To go through them that succinctly and confidently every time and make sure they're right is, is really impressive. We have a really competent staff. And to, to recognize them occasionally, once a year on administrative day, isn't enough. We need to do it more often. So, thank you, Teresa, and everybody that has anything to do with this. Thank you so much. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you. So you don't want to make any changes?
No, I, the minutes were perfect, except there should be, in this next upcoming minutes, there should be recognition of the staff, how good the minutes are. I'll look for it.
There you go. If Teresa doesn't want to write that, I can write it.
Thank you, County Attorney.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Here, none, it passes unanimously. Moving down to Chair's remarks, we have three items under Chair's remarks today. The first is to recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Anoka County. I'm going to ask Commissioner Meisner, who serves as the lead commissioner on our Human Services Committee of the whole, as we start our conversation today. Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, domestic violence impacts many in our community, our family, friends, and neighbors. Abusers oftentimes will repeatedly have violence against women and their partners for months, sometimes years on end. Sometimes victims are able to walk away, but oftentimes, they also walk away with post-traumatic stress and injuries. And sometimes abuse can also linger on and escalating that violence into violent crime. I do want to make note, as a reminder, that domestic violence is not limited to physical abuse. It includes emotional, financial, sexual, spiritual, and psychological abuse. It is about power and control over other people, and I just want to share some statistics. In the United States, on average, there are nearly 20 victims of intimate violence per minute. During one year, this equates to more than 10 million people. One in four women and one in nine men experience severe intimate partner physical violence, intimate partner sexual violence, and/or intimate partner stalking. Victims of intimate partner violence lose eight million days of paid work each year, and the cost of intimate partner violence exceeds eight billion, with a B, per year. And one in 15 children are exposed to intimate partner violence each year. Some ways, the public can support victims of domestic violence during October include: wearing purple to show support for victims and awareness of domestic violence during Purple Thursday; place a domestic violence awareness yard sign in your yard; change or mask the color of your porch lights to purple. And next, I would like to invite Connie Moore from Alexandra House, as well as Jenna Perez from The Dwelling Place, to talk more about Alexandra House and your organization. Connie?
Good morning. I'm Connie Moore, Executive Director at Alexandra House. Are these working? Okay, good. Thank you, Chair Gamache, and Commissioners, for having me here this morning. Alexandra House has been around almost 48 years. Now, what, 48 years we have been around? Alexandra House was started in 1977 by four pioneering women who saw incidences of domestic violence in their community and wanted to do something about it. And they were involved in a social justice group at St. Timothy's, and so they made it their mission to take on this issue and, and do work in the community. So within a year, they had established a 24-hour crisis line, and then by 1980, opened the first shelter in Anoka County. And 48 years later, Alexandra House has evolved, has evolved and grown to have nine programs and impacts, impacts the lives of over 17,000 people each year. But what has stayed the same, and I have to do this, is our mission: to empower victims, survivors of domestic and sexual violence, and inspire social change through education, support, and advocacy. And we do this by directly serving victim survivors and their children, and educating community members, so they can also be catalysts for change in the community. We have nine distinct program services, but I'm not going to take a deep dive into all those. We could be here for a long time, so. But at Alexandra House, we are dedicated to supporting everyone affected by domestic, sexual, and relationship violence, including elder abuse. We serve as vital resource for victims and survivors of sexual violence in all its form, while also offering assistance to their parents, family, family members, and other concerned individuals. With nine distinct programs and service areas, we provide a comprehensive and multi-dimensional approach to support, ensuring that we address the varied needs of those we serve. And Mandy, you quoted some stats, but we did some research because we wanted to see if there was any updated stats, so I'm going to give those. Almost one, this just really talks about the need for services and the need for action. Almost one in two women, that's 47.3%, and more than two in five men, 44.2%, reported experiencing context sexual violence, physical violence, and/or stalking victimization by an intimate partner at some point in their life. So, those numbers have gone up. There are multiple barriers individuals face when seeking safety and healing after experiencing domestic or sexual violence. At Alexandra House, our wraparound services address and break down these barriers, so families can move forward in a violence-free life that they've created for themselves. On a local level, in 2024, law enforcement in Anoka County responded to 12,494 domestic-related and 826 criminal sexual conduct calls. In Minnesota, in 2024, there were 26 known domestic-related homicides in Minnesota. This year, as of September, there's been a total of 17 lives already lost to domestic violence in Minnesota. And in the last decade, more than 290 Minnesotans have lost, known, that we know, have lost their lives to this violence. One thing that we know at Alexandra House is that preventing the cycle of violence is fundamental to the work that we do. Our youth services program provides one-on-one advocacy, support groups, and prevention programming to young people throughout Anoka County schools to prevent and end domestic and sexual violence. We provide prevention and intervention programs in six school districts to a total of 25 schools in Anoka County. In 2024, we experienced a 17% increase in services to youth from 2023. 175-plus children, youth, and parents were touched through school-based one-on-one advocacy and support groups, and over 5,900 students from elementary schools to college participated in 465-plus programs, activities, and presentations, learning about healthy relationships and violence prevention. Our youth services advocates have identified, identified a couple of trends that they're seeing. One is the increased normalization of sharing location via your phone apps, and growing issue of students becoming victims of private photos, videos, being shared without consent. So this is, these are issues that teens are dealing with on a regular daily basis, and that just adds to the ways that youth are being victimized, so. A lot of education around that. We're also a refuge and a lifeline, providing 24-hour emergency services and a 24-hour helpline. And our services are, we had an increase of 11% from 2023 for our shelter services, with 435 victim survivors and their children receiving 7,718 nights of safety. And we answered over 4,880 calls on our 24-hour emergency helpline and online chat. Our advocates provide multiple services, and again, I'm not going to go through all of our program services, because that would take a while, but I want to give you a little idea of the work that's being done. This includes advocacy and support in relation to employment, financial literacy, education, housing, basic needs, including our food shelf, financial aid for legal expenses, moving expenses, application fees, utilities and housing and rental assistance, transportation, car repairs, gas cards, and more. We meet each individual or family where they're at, basically based on where their specific situation, needs, and goals. One of the things that we are excited about that happened in 2025, in January 25, was creating access, a better, more access in our shelter for families with pets. So, we created Linus's Pet Haven. And just to give you an idea of the need for that, and we knew this was a need. We're just trying to figure out how, how, how were we going to do this? 71% of women in domestic violence shelters reported that their abuser threatened, or injured, or killed their pet. Nearly half of the victims chose to stay in abusive situations rather than leave their pets behind. And as many as 25% of survivors will return because the abuser is using their pet as a means to get them back. So it was really important for us to be able to provide the service, so that families could bring their, their pet with them. We opened that service in January of 2025. Alexandra House is the first shelter in the Twin Cities metro area to become a pet safe shelter. And we're, we are the only shelter in the Twin Cities to offer co-sheltering for up to six pets, including cats, dogs, rabbits, hamsters, and other companion animals. So far this year, we have served 30 pets and their families. So, 14 dogs and 16 cats. In all of our services that we've provided, in total, Alexandra House has impacted over 17,000-plus people, and this includes our work in our other programs and a lot of community education and outreach. In 2024, over 1,474 unduplicated individuals received ongoing services. And some of you may know this, but domestic violence is the third-leading cause of homelessness. The number of homeless youth is directly connected to violence within the home, and many of the victims, survivors of domestic or sexual violence are forced into poverty. So there's a real interconnection in all of these other issues that we work with when we're working with victims of domestic or sexual violence. And again, as Mandy pointed out, Commissioner Meisner pointed out, physical and mental health issues are also paramount for victim survivors, not just the actual victim, but also their children. So, this gives you an idea of who we serve. Obviously, we serve, the majority of folks that we serve are from Anoka County, and then primarily Hennepin and Ramsey County, and then 7% from around the state. And we do occasionally have folks who come in from a different state, who are fleeing that state to, because that's their only way to, to get away. And I think, you know, for us doing the work each and every day, we know that the work we do is making a difference in the lives of each person we help and in our communities. Here are just a few examples of what we hear from program participants. So, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we have a call to action. We want you to join us, people in the community, all of you, to join us in raising awareness through our yard sign campaign, Purple Lights Initiative, Wear Purple on Thursday, which is Thursday, October 23rd, and then Ask Me Why I Wear Purple Initiative. And I did bring some Ask Me Why I Wear Purple buttons that I put over here, so people can take those and, and use those. So you can wear that when you are taking your picture and sharing it on your social media on, on Purple Thursday. I won't go into the detail, because Commissioner Meisner, I talked about some of those initiatives, so. And Hope Fest, Saturday. I'm hoping that all of you can be there. I know some are not able to, but it's a great event. Want you to join us on Saturday, September 27th, at Anoka City Hall Plaza, as this is our kickoff to Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Connie, and Jenna.
Well, thank you. It is wonderful to be invited back again, and thank you to Connie and Alexandra House. We're so grateful for our partnership. The Dwelling Place, our slogan is "Where Abuse Survivors Dare to Hope Again." Our mission, we are a faith-based nonprofit right here in Anoka County, providing healing and hope to victims of domestic abuse through supportive services and a safe transitional place to call home. So we partner with shelters, and we offer transitional housing. Our average graduate is with us for two years. So for those who need the longer stability after shelter, we come into play. So some brief stats about us. We were founded in 1998 by a woman named Diane Storrs, a single mom who is escaping domestic violence with her two children. We began, actually, over in St. Paul, and then in 2013, we purchased two homes in Anoka County. And by 2018, we had moved all of our operations here. So we now own, we own the equivalent of 10 single-family homes on one city block, so we have 40 bedrooms in total. We are staffed by 18 women. Last year, we provided 780 hours of classes and childcare for our families in our programming, as well as case management. In 2024, we serve 22 women and 37 children. So our numbers are smaller, but our programming is deep and long-term, so we don't see the turnover that you would see in a shelter. The Dwelling Place has served hundreds of women and hundreds more children since our founding in 1998. And as I mentioned, we have the equivalent of 10 single-family homes with 40 bedrooms. We had 217 volunteers last year, providing 6,302 hours of service. So we couldn't do what we do without our phenomenal volunteers. I'm blown away by them. And last year, 93% of our residents were people of color. Brief story, Hannah, she graduated two years ago from The Dwelling Place. She, like many of our women, was a single mom. She had a little daughter. She met a man. She thought he was wonderful. They got married. She got pregnant, and she began to see another side of him. And the abuse began. She was from another country. She had no family. She had no resources. She had no vehicle. She had no way to get out. And the abuse escalated. She had two little kids and nowhere to go. And in a fit of rage, he attacked her, and he stabbed her multiple times in the abdomen. She was in the hospital receiving three surgeries to reconstruct her organs, and she found out that there are resources, like The Dwelling Place, like Alexandra House, to help her. She had no idea. And she said, "I'm not going back. I'm not going back." And so from that hospital room, she was able to get into The Dwelling Place. And so she moved in, all bandaged up with her two little kids, and literally the clothes on her back. And she moved into her apartment. It was safe. It was beautiful. There was a lock on the door. It was quiet. And for the first time, she could have peace, and she could sleep well at night. And she was with us for a little over two years. She went through our classes, our programming. She had intensive therapy from the trauma that she had endured. But I want to tell you something about Hannah. She is resilient. She is beautiful, and she has a smile that will light up any room. She shared at our gala two years ago, and everybody, there wasn't a dry eye in the room. She's just a beautiful, resilient person. She's graduating this semester with her RN. She'll be a nurse, and she has just proven that there is resiliency after abuse, and there is beautiful end stories. And she's one of many women that I could come up and share their stories of resiliency, and the children, the incredible, incredible change in the children as well. And the reality is, is Hannah is not alone, as we've heard multiple times. One in three, or maybe one in two, that's crazy new statistics, women will be a victim of domestic abuse in her lifetime. And so we receive every day calls for help. 365 were last year, and we always, always have a waiting list. We really have a waiting list of 10 families, and then beyond that, we just give them resources to other places, because we need to help them. And the need is far greater than what our services are able to help. So we offer safe transitional housing. We offer women's programming, children's programming, so we have childcare for the kiddos while moms in classes. And we have an alumni program. So once the women graduate, they continue back for support group, for therapy. The kiddos get back together, and we offer lots of fun events throughout the year, Christmas parties, and, and back-to-school picnics, and lots of things for our alumni to come back with our current residents. So the women's program, the way it looks, they come in, and they're in what's 30 days? Kind of a trial period? And then they apply for transitional, and they're in phase one. So six to eight months, they're in 15 hours of classes. They're receiving therapy and case management, and they're getting connected. And then they move into phase two. So for 12 to 18 months, this is their time to get their feet back on the ground, to reintegrate into society, to begin working, to get their kids in full-time childcare, to get their kids transitioned back into life. And then that last three months is when we help them find housing. And often, that starts in the beginning of phase two, because as we know, housing isn't always easy. We have many graduates who purchase a home. They, out of graduation, they're able to buy a house, a dream they've always had and never thought was feasible. Many others find housing through the county or a local apartment. Here's a couple of pictures. Our homes are beautiful. I love them. They are cozy. Recently, every single one of our homes have been renovated. And as I mentioned, they're two bedrooms, their own kitchen, a door that locks, a safe place to be. And we did just purchase, this isn't even public yet, Program Center, a commercial building, 12,000 square feet, a few miles from our homes. That will be our new childcare center and women's programming and office space. So we go public with it at our gala on Thursday, so you're the first to know. But we're very excited about how this is going to be able to expand our programming, because as we mentioned, there is just more need than what we can do. Even when we linked, I'll link arms with Alexandra House and all of the other amazing domestic violence programs, there's more, more work than we can do. And so this will allow us to have eight additional bedrooms for women and children, and a much deeper programming. Oh, there's our bathrooms. And here's one of our classrooms. And I don't think we have time for questions, but thank you all so much. What an honor and privilege to be here.
Thank you, Connie and Jenna, for speaking about your work and supporting victims in our community. Anyone can be a victim of domestic violence, as those statistics showed. So that's why it's so important to have the community resources in place to help people if they've ever faced with this issue. Anoka County will once again show its support for Domestic Violence Awareness Month this October by lighting several facilities in purple, including the Government Center, Medical Examiner's Office, Sheriff's Office, and the Blaine Human Services Center. At this time, I'd like to offer the Resolution 2025-98, proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Anoka County, and ask my fellow Commissioners to join me in support. And I was wondering if any Commissioners had any comments to make. Commissioner Meisner, and then Jepson.
Oh, nope. Jepson.
Commissioner Jepson.
Thank you. So I think on both of your presentations, thank you, by the way. Very, very impactful statistics and very moving stories. Thank you for the work that you do in our community. It's essential, and I'm sorry you have to do that. Both of you mentioned transportation. I just wanted to let you know, and Jenna, I apologize, I don't know exactly where all your houses are, but I know Connie, where you're located. Metro Transit just launched Micro Transit in Blaine and Spring Lake Park last week. It includes Alexandra House geography, and so many opportunities for jobs, community space, Blaine Human Services Building, North Town Transit Station. I mean, it includes a lot of geography within your immediate area, and I just wanted to offer that if you hadn't heard about that yet. That's a great resource for your staff and your clients.
Commissioner Meisner.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I, I don't have anything else to add, except deep appreciation. Oh, I'm sorry. Since you brought that up, because the rates, too, with the micro, they're, they're like $2.35, so in terms of just like very affordable and accessible to everyone.
Anyone else? All right. At this time, we have the proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month for the month of October, and remember everybody to the lighting of purple, using the purple colors during the, the month of October. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that's unanimous. So thank you again for the presentations and all the hard work and important work that you do every day. Moving down to item number two, it's a Resolution 2025-99, proclaiming October 2025 as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Jepson to lead our conversation today.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Each year, one in four pregnancies ends in tragedy. In the United States, nearly 21,000 babies are stillborn each year. Worldwide, there are more than 2.6 million stillbirths every year. It is estimated that 25% of all stillbirths in the U.S. are preventable today, and 47% of all still, stillbirths at 37-plus weeks of pregnancy are preventable today. In 1988, U.S. President Ronald Reagan declared October as a month to recognize the unique grief and suffering that these bereaved parents go through, to demonstrate support to those many families who have suffered such a tragic loss. The month of October provides an excellent opportunity for Anoka County to demonstrate its support in raising awareness of pregnancy and infant loss to support parents and families who are going through the unthinkable. I, I don't know, historically, how Anoka County has, has raised this issue up, but I know I did it for the first time last year. And, you know, I think a lot of women and their partners suffer in silence, because it's such a personal situation that they're dealing with. But I can't tell you how many people reached out to me after we did this last year to say thank you. I think it's very important. I mentioned it last year. I've been pregnant twice. I have two children. I can't imagine the grief that these women and their partners go through. And, and to have them suffer alone is very unfortunate. So I'm very honored and appreciative to this county to allow us to take a couple of minutes to acknowledge these, these families. So with that, I offer Resolution 2025-99, proclaiming October as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month in Anoka County, and ask my fellow Commissioners to also support.
Thank you, Commissioner Jepson. Any other comments? Here, none. All in favor of the Resolution 2025-99, signify by saying aye.
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 And it passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner Jepson. Item number three is to consider, for informational purposes, a presentation about the Anoka County Spotlight on Opioids and Overdose Event on October 4th. The Anoka County's Opioid Solutions Initiative, or A-C-O-S-I, was established to improve health and save lives, and reduce the impact caused by opioids and other substances by managing opioid settlement funding and supporting strategic partnerships. Our senior program manager of the Anoka County Opioid Solutions Initiative is Patty Constant. She's with us today, joining us, joining us to tell us more about the important free event coming up to help raise awareness about the overdose prevention and provide support for those who are or may be affected by substance abuse. Thank you, Patty, for being here. Thank you Patty for being here.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm excited to be here today. I won't take a ton of your time, but I wanted to share the important event that's coming up. I'm Patty Constant. My role as the opioid prevention specialist. In that role, I am tasked to prevent the initiation of opioid use, to prevent opioid misuse, overdose, and death. That isn't a simple task or a simple challenge. And to do that, we need a very multi-pronged approach. And one of those events, one of those things is having events to make sure that our community is aware of this situation about opioids in the county and to be able to learn all that they can so that they're acting with some great information and knowledge. We had a similar event last year and it was very successful. We had about 200 people through our doors and we're hoping for more this year. This year, our event is Saturday, October 4th, and it is entitled The Spotlight on Opioids and Overdose. It is at Spring Lake Park High School and it is from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. I wanted to share a little bit about this event in the hopes that you all could perhaps join us and that you can share the information about this so that as many people in our community can attend as possible to share the news and information. So what that day will look like is we have a resource exhibitor fair in the gym. And at this point, we have over fifty different supportive exhibitors. So those are people like Transformation House and different medical care treatment facilities, broad variety of community resources, all related to substance use prevention. And then we also will have, Health Fairview is hosting a naloxone education station. So at that table or area, people will be able to come and access free naloxone as well as learn how to utilize this life-saving medication. So that will be very important. In the fine arts studio just down the hall, we will have a variety of presentations throughout the day. So I will give a short presentation on kind of the status of opioids in Anoka County. What does it look like? What are our stats? And what are some of the initiatives that OCOSI or Anoka County Opioid Solutions Initiative is tackling? And then beyond that, we will have a lived experience panel. And we tried to go for a diverse group of people. So we have a parent who has lost a child to opioids. We have somebody who has been, who was active in addiction for a long time and is now a peer recovery specialist and very active in also a treatment facility in the area. And then somebody who has a variety of substance use in her history, but then now is, who is actively utilizing a medication-assisted treatment to support her opioid, her addiction to opioids. So it should be a really good experience with people who are going to share some very vulnerable parts of their story, hoping to try and reduce some of the stigma and understand that this can happen to absolutely anyone in our community. We are having some pizza for lunch, so there'll be a little time for people to have some food, nourishment, and then also visit all of those vendors in the gymnasium. And then we are having a presentation by Kirk Hughes, who is a nurse, and I just noticed a typo on this. Great, he's not an RM, he's an RN, but he works for the Poison Control Center. And his presentation will focus on some of the substances that are opioid derivatives that you may not think of that could either be in your medicine cabinet or that can be found at your local gas station that are becoming trends. One of those is called robo-tripping, where people are utilizing a lot of Robitussin-based cough syrups and that. And then there's also some opioid derivatives that people can find at gas stations called 7OH that are as addictive, if not more addictive than fentanyl. So that could cause and be a lead into people to exacerbating their addictions. So that should be a really informative and hopefully helpful presentation. Lastly, we have a medical provider, Dr. Kurt Devine, who will be talking about fentanyl. In 2024, 100% of the opioid fatalities in Anoka County involved fentanyl. And so he will be able to discuss with us everything of, there is appropriate medical use of fentanyl in a surgical setting. And then how did we go from that to having fentanyl in our drug supply? And why is it such an issue? And how can people seek supportive and effective treatment for that? So, and the event wraps up at 2:00. We are hoping that it will be very interactive and very fun. There will be some amazing community resources there. And we would really love to see as many people in the community attending as possible. On the first one that has the what to expect, the bottom, there is a QR code so people can seek more information there about all of the vendors that will be at the resource fair. And I'm really looking forward to it. This event also does, we have a survey, an evaluation and a survey. It also provides us with some information from the community about what they see as some of the most important priorities or concerning topics and issues related to opioids. So that will hopefully help inform our, some of our future efforts around opioids. So I will leave a few of the flyers so that if anyone needs them, we have them, but they should be available to you electronically as well if needed.
Thank you Patty for sharing the insight and expertise today. This event will truly make a difference for those who are touched by the opioid epidemic for sure. Remember, it's again, the Spotlight on Opioids and Overdose Event is Saturday, October 4th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Spring Lake Park High School. I encourage everyone to stop by for a lot of great information and a lot of great resources. I think the fact that, what was it, the Dr. Devine, it sounds like he's got a lot of good information from there. Commissioner Meisner, do you have a question or a comment?
Oh, yes, if you're done, Mr. Chair. Okay. No, thank you, Mr. Chair. No, just comments. So I think this is the first time that I've seen the agenda, but I am so pleased about what is on it with the panel. I mean, you guys have heard me talk about this often in committee. I mean, obviously stats are important, but the educational part and the, I guess, the humanness of why this is an epidemic and the challenge of, you know, trying to mitigate that is so complex. So I just want to commend you on that because the first one was kind of more of a resource to kind of kick us off. So this is just fantastic. And anyway, so thank you very much.
Commissioner Jepson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so I attended last year, did not know what to expect at all, and I was absolutely blown away. The event, you pack a lot into four hours. And there's a lot of conversations, a lot of expertise, a lot of resources. And what I left with and what I see here, which is very impressive, is it's community. And community is what is going to be the supporting foundation for these individuals dealing with addiction and recovery and remaining sober. So I, what I was so impressed with was the number of vendors, the quality of the vendors, and the overarching community. And it wasn't just all about drugs. It wasn't all just about X, Y, and Z. I mean, libraries, our medical examiner's office, our economic, I mean, it's community. And that, again, that was the most impressive thing. So I think, looking forward to attending this, again, I look forward to hearing more of the speakers and what they're going to contribute to your work and who all is going to be in support of this incredibly important initiative. And I do want to say that I had my library advisory committee meeting last night and we have naloxone distribution bins at every single one of our libraries. And almost every meeting, every monthly meeting, we hear new, a new number of lives that have been saved because of that work. And again, apologizing to the domestic violence workers, I'm so sorry that we have to do this work, but we have to save lives. And this is how we can do that. So thank you, and I'll look forward to seeing you on the 4th.
Thank you.
County Attorney Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As the county attorney, I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to express my appreciation, both for our staff on spotlighting opioids and overdose and also Alexandra House and the dwelling place for coming and talking about domestic violence. The reason that I bring it up at this point in the board meeting is to give you all a little bit of update. There are the solutions and the prevention component of the opioid thing. There's also the accountability component of it. And just yesterday, a jury in Anoka County returned a guilty verdict in a fentanyl overdose case that resulted in the murder of a citizen in our county. Our office has been hard at work on both the issues of opioid overdose and how that impacts people and takes people's lives in Anoka County, but also domestic violence. It's fitting because next week, we go to trial on another murder case involving a domestic violence incident with intimate partners. And that's a tragic case. I expect there will be a fair trial in that case, but it's something that we're all mindful of going into Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Last week, our office authorized and proceeded on an appeal on a domestic strangulation case. Just two weeks ago, I met with a victim from a 1992 intimate partner murder case out of Crapids who came to talk to us about her experience and what her life has been like since 1992. It is something, both overdose cases, fentanyl, opioids, and domestic violence that our office deals with on a daily basis. And, you know, I would suggest to the community that probably no less than 20 or 25 members of our office are actively working on those issues as we speak right now. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, county attorney. Anyone else? All right. Well, thank you again Patty. And I see on this information, it says it's at Spring Lake Park High School and the address is here and it also mentions enter door number six, so that's probably important. But this is also on our website. So all that information will be available if anybody wants to look at that.
And you can get more information on the speaker bios and things like that on the website.
Thanks again for being here.
Thank you for having me.
We will move down to our meetings of the whole. We are going to start by adding in the management committee, which was just before this meeting. So I will turn that over to Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The management of the committee of whole met this morning. The reason that is coming directly to us today is mostly because of timing. So what is on your slate today is in regards to the Minnesota paid leave that we all in the state of Minnesota have to prepare for, which rolls out January of 2026. So on our slate is A through D. Oh, I'm sorry. First, there were no public comments in person and I did not receive any via email either, but anyone may do public comments at mandy.meisner@anokacounty.mn.gov. Back to the consent agenda for A, this is for contract C0011864 with MetLife for Minnesota paid leave coverage for county employees as required by Minnesota Statute 268B beginning January 6th. This is a total premium rate of .80% of employee wages, and this is with a two-year guarantee. There was a very robust presentation and discussion about our options as a county, and we are opting to do this rather than go to the state offering. Number B, or letter B, amending contract C0008747 for long-term disability insurance with National Insurance Services at a proposed decrease rate for 30 hours or more per week. This is benefit eligible positions, non-union and union employees. If applicable, per labor relations contract term, this is also beginning January 1st, 2026. This is with a three-year rate guarantee. This amendment was because of the changes that are happening. Our staff did take the proactive move to look at contracts that are currently under place, and this was their recommendation. For letter C, this is contract C0011863 with MetLife for the following voluntary short-term disability insurance for 30 hours or more per week, benefit eligible positions, non-union and union employees with a rate guarantee through December 31st, 2028. The last item is amending contract C0008749 with UNUM for voluntary vision materials, only insurance with no charge in coverage or rate for 30 hours or more per week, benefit eligible positions. This is again, non-union and union employees for an additional year, and this would be ending December 31st, 2026. I will just end with some comments again about a really great discussion and questions from the full board, which I really appreciate. This is mandatory, it is a law, but there's a lot of moving parts that employers have to adjust to. And with that, I will offer the full slate, A through D.
It's been offered by Commissioner Meisner. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Schulte. Any discussion? Hearing none, this roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamas.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Anything else, Commissioner?
That concludes my report. Thank you.
We'll go now back to the regular agenda and we'll go down to the government ops meeting that was held, I believe, on the 20, on the 9th, yes. Under the consent items, we have a number of items here, but we're going to go one and two. And then we'll move down to the next one after that, which is going to be item number three, which I believe we are removing from the, from the vote anyway. So we'll start with the intergovernmental and community relations with numbers one and two. And Commissioner Reiner, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a couple of items for you to consider today. First one is a resolution, and it's accepting donations from patrons for our libraries. AARP Tax Aid Program District 16 and patrons of the Anoka County Library have donated the following totaling $2,916.80 for the months of April through August 2025 in cash to the Anoka County Library. And those donations are as follows. April through July, book cart, $1,996.80. Lois K. in memory of Eleanor Deemer, $20. Susan Brett Schneider in memory of Ellen Deemer, $75. Mimi Walke, $250. Deborah Smith for Book Club in a Bag, $100. AARP Tax Aid Program District 16, $300. And Gail Lindstrom in memory of Norland Lee, $25. Gary Carlson, Laura Kushner, and Dave Onmack in memory of Diane Ladenson, $150. And that's for a total, like I said, of $2,916.80. And Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the board to adopt Resolution Number 2025-GO9.
All right, we have a motion or we have a resolution that has been presented. We will go ahead and do a roll call on item number one.
Commissioner Gamas.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Item number two.
Item number two is another resolution, and this is accepting dedicated donation for our Midwest Medical Examiner's Office. Summon Chatterjee of Shakopee, Minnesota has donated a used Phantom 3 Professional UAV with hard drive camera, nice unit, to the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office. Midwest Medical Examiner Director Shane Sheets is licensed by, is licensed by the FAA as a commercial UAV pilot under Part 107. The estimated fair market value of this donation is $500, though no goods or services were provided in exchange for this donation. The acceptance of this donation will likely enhance the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office operational capabilities. Minnesota Statute 465.03 requires the county to accept donations by resolution expressed in terms prescribed by the donor in full. Acceptance of the Phantom 3 Professional UAV with HD camera is in the best interest of Anoka County. And so with that, I'd like to move the board to adopt Resolution Number 2025-GO10.
Resolution has been offered. It's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamas.
Aye. And that passes unanimously.
And as mentioned, number three on our agenda is one that we've pulled. And that concludes my items, and I'll pass now the rest of the GO agenda off to Louie Jepson.
Commissioner Jepson with Facilities Management.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. I have two lease extension agreement contracts with the Ham Lake Crosstown Strip Mall. The first contract is C-008186 for continued operations of the Anoka County License Center, extending the term of the lease for an additional five years, starting January 1 of 2026. The second lease extension is contract C-008187, and this is for the continued operations of the Anoka County North Central Library, also extending the term of the lease for an additional five years, and also starting January 1 of 2026. The next item is a little different than many items we have in Facilities Management. We allocated for this year $120,000 to renovate the Lionel Lakes Non-Secure Programs Laundry Room. Facilities Management is requesting that these dollars go instead to installing a fence at the Lionel Lakes Correctional Facility in its non-secure program. Program staff are prohibited from physically preventing a youth from leaving the building. The program has approximately six youth running away from the facility each year. These youth generally, just because of the way the buildings are set up, these youth generally, unfortunately, run into a neighboring neighborhood. And as you can imagine, that doesn't always sit well with neighbors. So, we are concerned that without this fencing, we may have serious clashes coming forward with those neighbors and these vulnerable youth, and they may want to proactively, we want to proactively limit any potential criminal activity. So, what Corrections is recommending is a construction of a 1,000-foot security fence. The fence will connect to secure buildings, discouraging the youth from running in the direction of that neighborhood. We can't close off the facility 100%, but we firmly feel that this new fence will detract them from going into the neighborhood. So, no need to worry about the laundry room, though that project is just being diverted to next year, which will get done in 2026.
All right, and you're offering it, all three of these?
Yes.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Jepson, seconded by Commissioner Reiner. Any comments, discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Moving down to the finance portion of the meeting, Commissioner Jepson.
Thank you. There are two items for finance. The first is to consider a contract with Can-Am Teller, a five-year term not to exceed $420,000, including a contingency of $13,000, subject to final review. Can-Am Teller is a fully integrated point-of-sale system that will be used at the Sheriff's Office and for the finance back office with future departments identified for phased rollout. The second and final finance item is to adopt Resolution 2025-GO11, declaring the official intent of Anoka County to reimburse certain expenditures from the proceeds of bonds issued by the county. We plan to issue bonds in 2027 related to government center space modifications, court remodeling, radio shop improvements, and various Rum River campus improvements. The resolution does not require the board to issue these bonds, but allows for reimbursement only if we decide to bond. So with that, Mr. Chair, I offer these two consent agenda items.
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Jepson, seconded by Commissioner Schulte. Discussion. Commissioner Reiner.
Yeah, so at our last workshop, we were talking about some of the projects that are in the CIP, and, you know, a lot of these were talked about over the years, and there was going to be another discussion on whether or not we were going to do all these projects. I believe the action that we took in December totaled about 23, in excess, I think, of $23 million worth of projects. And so, I guess my question is, I realize that this action, and I'm talking about number eight here, is just to allow us to reimburse the county from bonds that we would issue if we decide to go through with those projects, if I understand that correctly. And my question is, are we going to have that conversation about some of the, because some of these projects, at this point, I don't agree with? And so, just wondering if we're going to have that conversation and kind of reiterate what the list should be? And I'm asking our--
County Administrator.
We will be starting that dialogue and discussion this afternoon as part of our work session with a deeper dive--
--into all the detailed projects in your October, starting at your GovOps area with the finance portion of that. So, yes, all that dialogue will be happening. One thing to kind of keep in mind relative to all these projects, while they are listed, they still have to go through the formal approval process through this board before they go forward. And again, it's to allow the opportunity to reimburse costs as some, I would call the soft cost aspect of it is starting to take place as we start prepping for it, which would be consultants, you know, prepping for design and things such as that. That's what we want to be able to reimburse. Doesn't mean we have to, but it gives us the opportunity to. So, with that, yeah, that'll be coming up.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Meisner?
Yeah, no, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, and we did talk about this in the committee, Commissioner Reiner, and I just wanted for the public's edification to kind of what our administrator was mapping. So, our CIP, which is the Capital Improvement Plan, that's like a larger overview that is changing and fluid all the time, but our CIB, which is Budget, that is where we decide as a board, this is what we're going to invest in, that happens every year. So, just to reiterate that, because I just want to make sure that the public understands our actual process. Thank you.
And you said that our administrator was mapping, not napping, right?
I thought about it, but, you know.
Any other items out the information, from the information from those meetings from any of the Commissioners? Nope? Okay. We will move down to--
We didn't vote on that last one, I don't think.
Oh.
Like the last two, actually.
Okay, that's right. So, we've got, thank you very much, thank you. Seven and eight. This is a roll call vote.
Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner Schulte. We'll go down to Human Services and Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee of the Hole, Human Services, we did meet on September 16 at 8:30 a.m. in this building. There were no public comments in person, and I did not receive any via email either, but anyone may at mandy.meisner@anocacounty.mn.gov. So, on our slate today, first up is the Approval of Family Homelessness Prevention and Assistance Program Subgrantee Contracts. This is for C-0011824 for the YMCA, C-0011825 for the Salvation Army, and C-0011826 for Hope for Youth. So, the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency has awarded Anoka County this grant of $1,395,000. This is for the 2026-2027 biennium. This would be starting October 1, 2025. This funding is for prevention and rapid rehousing supportive services, and will provide direct rental and deposit assistance for youth and youth-led families, single adults and families. And these are the subcontracts that is recommended, the YMCA, Salvation Army, and Hope for Youth. The next is Resolution 2025-HS-12. This is recognizing September 2025 as National Recovery Month in Anoka County. So, in Human Services, there are always a variety of initiatives that we want to highlight as a board. This is the first time that we are particularly doing it for Recovery Month in Anoka County, so I'm pleased to see this. I will just make my comment that recovery is not linear. It is very much up and down, and I wanted to comment that. Next up, under Community Corrections, this is for the Conscious Healing Counseling Contract, And this is including $200,000 for Anoka Juvenile Center Services, $30,000 for Anoka Workhouse Services, and $1,800 for Anoka County Juvenile Field Services. This contract has been going really well, and we've had this for several years, but it is now expanding. The next item is under the Job Training Program. This is to authorize and to apply, if accepted, funds for, from, excuse me, the Department of Employment and Economic Development, also known as DED. This is for adult career services and not to exceed $400,000. I will make note that the Job Training Center has unfortunately gone through a lot of financial challenges, and the resources have decreased over this last cycle. Overall, this particular one, if this grant is awarded, will have a goal of 60 participants and will be trained over two years with the goal of earning national industry-recognized manufacturing skills standards. The next item is Resolution 2025-HS-14. This is proclaiming September 2025 as Workforce Development Month in Anoka County. I did mention that they have been going through some challenges. By 2035, more than half a million people will reach the age of 65, and many of them will be retiring. This is reducing the working age population from 62% to 57% during that time. And in Minnesota, there are 16 Workforce Development Boards. Nearly 50 of them are Career Force. Minnesota's workforce system location, ours is located in Blaine. And the last item is under Public Health and Environmental Services, and this is to authorize, to approve Amendment Number Two to Child and Teen Checkups. This is for contract C-0010275 from the Minnesota Department of Human Services. Funds for the budget period of January 1, 2026, through December 31, 2026, and this has been added to the contract in the amount of $661,387. And with that, I will offer the entire slate.
I have a motion by Commissioner Meisner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Jepson. Anybody want to pull any of these items for a separate vote? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Mr. Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Commissioner Meisner, do you have any informational items from the meeting?
Yeah, we did have a discussion about our 2026 legislative proposals in Human Services, specifically. There are a lot of challenging times with both the federal and state cost shifts, so we are working hard to make sure that our residents are going to be served. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. Move down to Public Safety Committee, and Commissioner Brastad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the Committee of the Hole for Public Safety met on September 9. We have three items for you today. All three of them are donations to our Anoka County Sheriff's Office. That is very cool to see. The first one is Resolution 2025-PS15, accepting a dedicated donation from the Anoka County Agricultural Society. They are donating $4,700 to the Anoka County Sheriff's Office to be used towards security at our county fair. The second item is Resolution 2025-PS16, and this one comes from the Anoka County Crime Prevention Coalition, and this is $1,800 to support the Real Time Crime Center Program. And last but not least, we have Resolution 2025-PS17, which is accepting a dedicated donation from Infinite Campus Foundation, which is located in Blaine, and their generous donation is $10,000 to support our Anoka County SWAT team. And I'll offer those, Mr. Chair.
And these have all three been offered by Commissioner Brastad. Anyone wishing to pull any of them? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Mr. Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Mr. Heinrich.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Any informational items, Commissioner Brastad?
Just a quick reminder that tonight is the Anoka County Sheriff's Office Open House, a very, very popular event, and it's fun to attend. There's so much information there. Highly recommend it for families with children. And also, tonight, for the first time, you'll be able to walk over and tour the new 911 Center and Radio Shop, so encourage people to check that out. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Brastad. Moving down to transportation items, or the transportation meeting, Commissioner Jepson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Transportation Committee met on September 16 at the Transportation Division Facility. There was no public comment. There is one action item that we will take separate and not have it in the consent, and then followed by three consent items. The first item for transportation is Resolution 2025 TR39, which is a resolution regarding the legislative effort to divert county funding directly to the city of Anoka. I would like to highlight some key points in the resolution, so the community understands why this resolution is important and why we are supporting the county attorney's office to take any and all appropriate legal action to challenge the special legislation. In 2023, the Minnesota Legislature passed a bill establishing a regional transportation sales and usage tax to support transportation projects in the seven-county metro. They intended for these funds to be spent on projects for the benefit of the entire region. This past legislative session, they created special legislation that would divert $6.2 million of Anoka County's transportation dollars to the city of Anoka for construction of a pedestrian bridge spanning the Rum River Dam. This would be the third bridge within a quarter mile in downtown Anoka. Additionally, according to the Minnesota Constitution, special legislation like this that takes money away from the county and directs it to Mendat to give that money directly to a city and ignoring Minnesota laws and the department's own rules, policies, and procedures must be approved by the county board before it can take effect. We feel compelled to move forward with this resolution for two specific reasons. We are adamantly opposed and challenged the process and how this legislation was created and passed, and we strongly question its constitutionality. And with that, Mr. Chair, I would like to offer Resolution 2025 TR39.
It's been offered by, the resolution was offered by Commissioner Jepson. Any discussion? I'm totally in agreement with taking this action today, and glad that we are moving forward with it. Commissioner Reiner, or, excuse me, Commissioner Schulte.
Mr. Chair, I know this could be a vote by acclamation, but I think because of its importance, we should do a roll call vote.
I would agree. I would agree. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Excuse me, aye.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Move then to the consent items, Commissioner Jepson.
Yeah, so there are three consent agenda requesting approval. The first is approving Resolution 2025 TR37. It's a resolution authorizing the preparation of highway right-of-way for a bridge replacement at Old Central Avenue over Rice Creek, and the rehabilitation of Old Central Avenue from Mississippi Street to 69th Avenue in the city of Fridley. The second resolution is 2025 TR38, which is a resolution authorizing the acquisition of that right-of-way for that same project just mentioned. Construction of that project will, is scheduled for 2027. The final item on the consent agenda is approving a quitclaim deed, expanding the 20-feet-wide opening to 24.5 feet, an additional 4.5 feet. In June, we approved a 40-feet-wide control access opening at Bunker Lake Crossing. During the verification of final design, it was discovered that the access drive was constructed approximately 4.5 feet further north than originally planned. All parties involved, including the city of Ramsey, county staff, city staff, and land owner, recommend approval. So with that, Mr. Chair, I will make a motion to approve the three consent agenda items.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Jepson, seconded by Commissioner Schulte. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Commissioner Jepson, any informational items from the transportation meeting?
Just two things, like-- Just two things, like with human services, as Commissioner Meisner mentioned, we are discussing our legislative platform. There's a lot of transportation needs out there as well. So those are continued conversations, large conversations, that we will be committed to moving forward for the 2026 legislative session. The other thing which was interesting, we discussed a contract with the International Union of Operating Engineers to provide training to our maintenance, fleet services, signs, and park staff. It's something that we started about two years ago. It's been very successful. The quality of the training is above par, and the cost to do that quality of training is very, very reasonable. So that was, that was an easy, easy question to answer for that. And with that, I am done with the transportation report.
Thank you, Commissioner Jepson. That concludes our meetings as a whole. We'll move down to Agenda Item Number Eight, which is the Resolution 2025-100, Continuation of the Anoka County Board of Oversight of Court Appointed Attorneys. Do we have a presentation from?
No presentation on this one, but it's really kind of an extension of something that dates back to 1988. This continues the extension until a known action is taken, which will be outlined in your appendix.
Okay.
Head up for the resolution.
It's been offered by Commissioner Schulte. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Item Number Nine, Resolution 2025-101, Resolution Adopting a Proposed Property Tax Levy for Program Year 2026. Now, turn this over to the county attorney, or excuse me, to Jim Dickinson.
CFO Cory Camp.
Not the county attorney, sorry there, Brad.
I may have something to say, but I'll let Cory say it.
Cory.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, County Board members. My name is Cory Camp from the Chief Financial Officer for Anoka County. As you know, we have to adopt a preliminary levy for our tax year 2026. Again, the preliminary levy sets the stage for the maximum levy we can issue for the year. We can lower that in December when we do a final, but we cannot raise it. And so, as you know, and I don't know, do I have to hit this to go forward? Is that? Nope.
Also, they have Jeff Perry's name up there on the thing, so I was making sure they changed it.
I don't know, I had a couple of slides. I didn't know if they were going to pop up here or not, Eric. So.
Check on the slides.
I'm going to check on them. Yeah? What's that?
Dance.
Dance? All right. You got them? All right, what, Eric? Do this quick fix. Right? Yep. That would be it. Okay, we're just going to bring up a couple of slides. Based on our workshop we had back a few weeks ago, this was the proposed budget that was brought before you for our 2026, showing that gap of 30.5 million. And so I wanted to show that, just to remind you of where we were. And this is our five-year budget projection. Right now, in order to close this gap, we are asking for a proposed levy, a preliminary levy at 9.9%. And as you look out at the projection, the projections drop to seven and then back up to nine out in '28, but we stay in single digits for the next five years, even with the projected debt levies for the jail and parking ramps. Okay? And so that's kind of one of the features. And if you recall last year, when we showed you the proposed, we were at 15% for this year. And so we have closed the gap at a smaller place, and we've worked hard to try to do that with the budget. So with that, are there any questions on this preliminary budget? Again, this is the kind of beginning of, you know, finalizing. We cannot hire it, but we can lower it from here. We still, if you recall, we still have a slight gap of about 1.3 million, which we will close between now and December. So.
Jim Dickinson, our county administrator, please.
County Board, really what you're seeing is a status quo budget. Yes, there are some new employees in here. Those do relate to what we identify as federal and state impacts relative to our budget, whether it be the min-choice assessments, reassessments, those types of things, SNAP program. Today, we talked about the Paid Family Medical Leave Act, those dollar amounts. Those are items that are all contained in there that are outside of what we had anticipated last year. And as Cory identified, the forecast at this point in time was 15.4%. We're coming across here with a recommendation of 9.9. Then also looking ahead through the five-year projections and looking at sustainability and how we can put this together, we tried to come forth with our best shot across to the board out of the gates. And with that, does, as Cory indicated, identify some additional work. One thing I'd like the board to understand here as well, looking ahead, what's going on at the state, potential special session, whether or not that will have some impacts to us, positive or negative. Positive, we can, we can adjust between now and the end of the year. Negative, we believe we can accomplish majority of those types of things within this proposed levy. The federal, absent them doing some things, we could be actually talking about a government They're talking about budget reconciliation at this point in time, and that remains to be seen. But most of the programs that do start to come up do impact the county. And what we're finding, not only at the state and the federal level, is the organization they tend to want to push things to is the counties. And where we have to go forth with our legislative plans to start challenging these things more aggressively, to keep all those in mind. But going back to the budget, talking about status quo, what's most important? You know, we really look at the strategic priorities that the board put in place early in the year, which include public safety, transportation, community services, workforce, communications, digital experience, livability. And as I look at this budget, we try to keep them all pretty much equal. If I had to say there's a focus of some of those priorities more than others, I would look towards workforce, community service, and public safety. Those are the areas that might spike a little bit others more than the others. But with that, we present a budget from a recommendation from your staff, county administration, and would stand for questions. Otherwise, we look for approval of the resolution in your packet.
Right. Do we have any questions, or should I ask for, offer the resolution first? I go, we'll go questions. Commissioner Meisner.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just comments. I mean, you've heard me say this, but I honestly, I can't, I can't believe that we got to 9.9%. As you stated, it was 15% last year. That was just our own challenges. And then as the federal and state developed, I, I was like, we're, we're not going to be able to get it down, you know, or below a two-digit. So I do want to just like commend you and then also just thank the staff because this is real work and creativity of every single department. And I know that 9.9, I know that I sound kind of glib by saying, I can't believe it's this low. I know that this is a lot of money, particularly for my district, which is the most economically challenged in the entire county. So I don't take this lightly. I was just so nervous that we were going to be looking at 15, or 12, or 16. So thank you again, and this, looking at the forecast too, this is, I know fluid, it'll change from year to year, but this is such a, such a better process than what we were having before, I think. So again, I want to thank you for having a long-term kind of approach to it rather than year to year to year and just like what the bottom line is, because that is not sustainable. And at the end of the day, we have to keep providing these services for our residents. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. Any other comments? Commissioner Heinrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I kind of reserved some of my comments during the resolution. We did, I'll say condemning the legislation that diverted $6.2 million of county funds that would have gone towards our transportation and safety upgrades, instead to a third walk bridge over the Rum River, which in my mind is unnecessary. That's one thing. The reality is here at the county government, I've been learning, I came from the state legislature, and you know, sometimes we, I think, played a little bit of a game at the state legislature that I'm learning more about now in county government, is that the reality of the impacts of cost shifts and unfunded mandates and further unknowns about the future. And so we're really stuck in a position here with our county budget where we have to follow law and mandates and administer programs that are prescribed by the federal government and the state of Minnesota. And instead of somebody else picking up the impact on that, it's pushed on to the county board and, and the tax levy for our taxpayers. Insurance premiums, paid family leave, I appreciate Administrator Dickinson bringing that up, that's a reality as well. County employees, before I was here on the county board, I, I think there was a, a study that was done, and it's kind of come into fruition now this year and maybe a little bit last year, where we are more at market and able to compete and bring in and recruit good, good talent and retain them. And we hadn't been able to do that in the past. And so I see some sort of impact on the budget since I've been here, trying to get to a spot where we can retain great employees for the, for the county. We went through, before my time on the board as well, three years of a zero increase, which during the time seemed like the right thing to do, and it might have been the right thing to do. But that also should be recognized as an impact as we look forward on this budget here for '26 and, and the years to come. It's frustrating, and I lay a lot of this at the feet of the, of state legislation and actions by the federal government. I really think, I could be corrected maybe by Cory, but we could be more looking at in the fours or fives versus the nines, had it not been for some of these things that the county really has no control over. So I just wanted to point that out. This is a frustrating spot that we're in. I am going to support this preliminary budget today, but it's not without some frustration. Thank you, Matt, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Reiner.
Yeah, just a couple of thoughts on this. I guess I'm going to agree with previous comments about the process that we have in place. It was very comprehensive and turned out a good result. I had announced early on that I'm not going to support anything that has two digits in it, and lo and behold, Administrator Jim Dickinson comes up with 9.9. The cost shifts from the state mandates, there's a lot of things that we're dealing with here at, at the county. In addition to, and what John just said, you know, we did have in 21 and, was it 21, 22, some really bad advice and some really bad management that threw this county into a hole. We had an 11% increase, a 17% increase, and now this is going to be a 10. I came in here kind of, really not knowing which way I was going to go on this, because I, I don't want to support this because I think that there is some more work that can be done, but I am going to support it, and I trust that more work will be done. And I'm hoping for maybe around an eight, I don't know if that's possible, but you know, I think more work should be done on this topic and see if we can get it a little bit lower.
Commissioner Jepson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, thank you to the comments already made by my colleagues. I too have significant frustrations with decisions that were made totally out of our control. I won't add to the frustrations that have already been voiced, but I would like to offer a, a little bit of help, if at all possible. Over this past legislation, I've been able to put into words what this has meant to me, this fight, this fight for the transportation bill that was ultimately passed. And the, the one word that I've come up with is exhausted. And I cannot imagine you all as staff and you all as my colleagues felt equally exhausted with this past legislation. So what I've been sharing with folks is that this, you know, it is what it is. There's a lot that we cannot control, and what we can control, we're working through and being creative and being very fiscally responsible. But I would like, as a suggestion, if I could be so bold, is I think we need to tell our story a little bit more broadly. We need to step out of that invisible layer of government. And I know we cannot change the property tax statement because that's determined statewide, but I would really love to see an insert in the property tax statement that goes out explaining how our state and our federal government is directly impacting our property taxpayers. Because that story, I don't think, I mean, we always say, you know, unfunded mandates, but really what does that mean to the average taxpayer? They don't understand that. And I just think a slip of paper to explain what is our responsibility and what is out of our control. And if, I, I don't know if that would take a motion, I don't know if that's just direction to staff, I don't know if my colleagues, I haven't talked to anybody about this, but I think that's something that we should be on the proactive side of considering.
Your staff has been anticipating something like that, so yeah, it'd be in the making here, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Reiner.
And I'd like to add to that. I think that's a really good idea. More information is better, and so people need to understand. But I, and a lot of these things, we can't do anything about, but part of this is, is this board too, getting some very bad information in '21 and '22 to pass a zero increase levy. And so I think that we should, if we're going to do that, also include that, because you know, we have to look in the mirror too. It was based on information that was given us that was not good, but we did vote for that, and that did put us on a trajectory to be where we are today.
The one, I think the one thing I'd, to tell people is obviously that this is a less than last year, but it's not still a good outcome. And if you have started to hear on the news at 10 o'clock at night, cities are dealing with the same thing, and some of the other counties in the metro area and all across the state. So it's, it's a very difficult time for a lot of us, counties and cities, which last night I was watching some of that, that was being covered. And the, the numbers that are starting to, they're talking about in some of the suburban communities are pretty high. So it's, it's across the board, just the number of things going on with the economy, but also things, if you're building a fire station or you're doing things like that. We're trying to do the best we can to bring it down from the last couple of years and then, and then get us under a budget that's laid out, as you can see, by the five-year projection that we have in front of us, so that we know where we're going and we know a little bit better of where we're, where we're going to end up. So I'm happy with that part of it, that we have this projection that we're looking at that does continue to bring it down over the next five years with one brief increase because of, I believe, that's related to some of the bonds that we'll be needing to do. But yeah, I think we're on the right track going forward. Commissioner Meisner, you got a question or a comment?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just wanted to, just wanted to make a comment of Commissioner Reiner's suggestion about elaborating on our statements to all of our residents. First of all, I want to say thank you for owning that we did vote for it. Now, I did not always vote for a 0% levy because I did not think it was sustainable, but I do want to just kind of challenge you about the narrative that you're suggesting. Because even when I didn't vote for it, I am still responsible. I still own that this is, this is what we did. And I also want to make note that our CFO, every year, he would present the information with the 0%, with any percent, of a variety of scenarios. And he would always be very clear, if you do this, that will happen. If you do this, that will happen. So the idea that it is somehow not our responsibility because we got quote unquote "poor" advice, I, I don't think is the complete truth. So I do just want to point that out, and I am not in favor of elaborating much on that statement, except of what Commissioner Jepson or even Commissioner Heinrich was talking about. I think sticking to facts is a good thing, absolutely. But once you start elaborating, I think it gets into a really slippery slope because all seven of us, I'm sure, interpreted our budget very differently, and I don't think that's a very good idea. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So do I have a, we have a resolution for us? Oh.
Were you asking for a resolution?
all seven of us, I'm sure, interpreted our budget very differently, and I don't think that's a very good idea. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So do I have a resol, we have a resolution for? Oh.
Were you asking for a response?
I'm not, no.
Oh, okay, all right.
Do I have an offer of the resolution for the 2025-101 property tax levy?
Offer the resolution.
It's been offered by Commissioner Jepson. Any further discussion? This is a roll, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Julie. Commissioner Brastad.
Thanks, tried to catch you earlier. Yeah, just, everyone has brought up some good facts, and it, it's 100% accurate that this is a real challenging levy because of federal and state cost shifts. I am not going to support today's action, and I hope that we can bring our final levy down to something that I can support in December. What I have seen over the last couple of years is 2024, we were over 10% increase in our levy. 2025, 16.86, 74 new positions. The proposal for 2026 is 9.9 with 27 new positions. Some of those positions are warranted and we need it, but what I am seeing is not necessarily a balancing of needs versus wants. And I think we just have to really tighten things up when we know we have less control at the state and the federal level. We need to do everything we possibly can at the county to rein in, rein in as much as we can.
Commissioner Reiner, and then Commissioner Meisner.
Yeah, you know, I'm glad you brought up the, the hires, because we, we're shocked in the last couple of years at, you know, the amount of new hires that were being proposed to us. I think it was, what did you say it was, 70, 80, 90? And, but it was also revealed that in '21 and '22, there was a suppression of hiring by management, and that put us into a hole as far as the need for new hires. And so, with that kind of shuffling of the deck and playing, I call it game playing, where you're trying to suppress hi, new hires to get down to a zero levy suggestion that, you know, it, you're, you're creating a hole, and it did create a hole. And so, when we had to come back from that, yeah, we had some high increases, and unfortunate, but that is some of the background of what did happen.
Commissioner Meisner.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And yeah, Commissioner Brastad, you have always, you know, brought up this, or in conversation with the committees. And then I, I guess I'll just say the same things that I have also said in committee. So with these, with these new hires, and I, I can't remember, is it '22 or '25 of the 27, they're, they're actually grant funded. And at the end of the day, we still have to provide services. So for, I disagree with your, you know, opinion that it's a want versus a need. I am very confident that this is pretty bare bones. And so, the idea of not supporting staff who are doing the work, the boots on the ground, what that would mean, the consequence is we wouldn't be providing services to the, to the level that we are. So I, I do want to just make, make note of that for, for my opinion about that. Thank you.
Any other comments before we take the roll call vote? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye. And that passes six to one. Item number 10 is Consider Resolution 2025-102, Resolution Adopting a Proposed Public Safety Tax Levy for the Program Year 2026. Cory, are you going to give us an update on that one too?
Yeah.
All right.
Just a second, let's try to do one this, wait, hang on a sec here. So there we go.
In the meantime, I'll offer the resolution to get it on the table.
Thank you, Commissioner Schulte.
Okay. Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name is Cory Camp, Chief Financial Officer for Anoka County. If you recall, the public safety levy, which was extended to 2033 in the legislative session, we did, we did not have one for Program 24, Year 24, or Program Year 25, as we were working with the Joint Law Enforcement Co-op. And this allows the Joint Law Enforcement Co-op to invest in capital projects for public safety related to all the departments, police, fire, and working with our 911 center across the county. And so, at this point in time, we do have a new public safety data system that was, that the JLEC entered into a contract for, and as part of that going forward, we had some leftover dollars, about, but over 1 million that we could put towards it. But over the next couple of years, we need to pay for the second part of that new public safety data system through the public safety levy. And so, there's $500,000 slated for this year, and I believe we're another $500,000 for the following year to help pay for the public safety data system.
Thank you, Cory. Questions or comments? Commissioner Reiner, and then Commissioner Heinrich.
So the entire cost is 2.7 million, correct?
Correct.
And so, this would be 500,000. You're talking about maybe doing 500 next year. Well, that's still, and I, I understand JLEC has a, a balance of about 1.2 million?
1.2 million.
And they're spending that on this system?
Yes.
But that still leaves a delta of about 1.1 million.
Well, actually, it's 2.7 minus the 1.2, so it might be three years of the 500,000 would get you there.
So you're saying we're going to be doing this three years in a row?
Probably three years in a row at this point. No more, unless there's other projects the JLEC would like to recommend, and that's another discussion.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I know the answer to this, but just for the sake of those, those watching as well, Cory, is the, this is a separate line item on the property tax statement, or?
Yes.
Okay, and how many different entities are, are people going to see between the county and the city and the state and stuff like this?
On the property tax statement?
Yes.
I think there's, there's quite a bit. You have the county, you have the schools, and the school may have referendums, which would be depending on your school district and what part of the school district you're in. You're going to have also, you've got the HRA, you've got the Met Council.
Watershed. Watershed districts.
Watershed, watershed district, depending on if you're in that watershed district or not. Coon Creek's one of the biggest ones. So it's going to vary. There's a, there's a number of jurisdictions to your point.
Yes. Thank you, that's helpful, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Mr. Heinrich.
Aye.
Mr. Brastad.
Aye.
Mr. Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Move down to item number 11, our committee appointments. Consider follow, the following related to the Anoka County Children and Family Council as recommended by the Human Services Committee of the whole, appointing Dennis, excuse me, Denise Byers of the Lee Carlson Center, replacing Marissa Smook, as the community agency representative for a term ending January 31, 2026, and reappointing Bukola Orellola of the Anishan Story as the community agency representative for a term ending May 31, 2028. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Remove by Commissioner Meisner, or do I have a second?
Second.
Saying by Commissioner Jepson. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. And with that, thank you to staff for all the hard work on the budgets, on both the different levies that we worked on today. And as a reminder to everybody, this is these, the one levy that we set was the high level, that means in the next four months, what, October, November, December, I guess it's three, our staff will be working to see if we can bring that down, but we can't go any higher. With that, this, we're all adjourned the meeting. And we'll see if there's...